Good afternoon, colleagues. Amina Chantais-Finconalas, the tutor in Guam is back from recess. I was just informed by the clerk that there are about three or four amendments right now, and at this time, I'm going to acknowledge the author of the bill. I see an amendment. I will start with you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to amend on lines 4 to 11 of Page 5 to amend Sections 4403d6 to read. And this is number 6. All written requests for a post-audit investigation must be submitted to the Commission within 10 years, so it's striking out six months, of the personnel's actions effective date. Should a request for a post-audit investigation be requested prior to the 10 years statute of limitations, the Commission has jurisdiction to investigate the complaint. Having begun the investigation in compliance with this section, the Commission may take an action on the complaint and personnel action so long as it is compliant with the other 180-day rule of Section 4403d2b. And essentially, Madam Speaker, this is an attempt to address the concerns about the statute of limitation being too short, and if the range of filings goes anywhere from three months to 23 years, I believe that 10 years is a very, very generous compromise to the original six-month statute that was proposed in the bill as substituted.
Thank you, Senator Torres. On the Torres amendment, anyone wishing to speak? Minority Leader, you are recognized.
Sis, this is my seat, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to speak on this amendment. You know, Madam Speaker, when we were discussing the merits of even having a statute of limitations, was...the point was, there really should not be one. It's never had been in the past, and I think several jurisdictions as well doesn't have a statute of limitations on something that we have to look at the merit of an individual, whether it's discovered in six months, whether it's discovered in 10 years. We need to correct whatever wrongs that were done, and it defeats the purpose of the merit system itself, which by the Organic Act of Guam was created and that this legislature enacted. The importance, if we thought that a statute of limitations was important back then, then why didn't we do it back then? Why is it so important that we do it now?
So, Madam Speaker, I object to this amendment. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else on the main amendment, as proffered by Senator Mary Torres? Senator Therese, you are acknowledged.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I want to thank the sponsor of the bill for recognizing that, yeah, that, you know, we should not limit it to six months. So, I definitely agree with that, that we...six months is too short. It would not be just to keep it limited to six months. When we look at the statistics, you know, there was, I think, the longest ones we've seen from 2018 to 2020 was, you know, one was 23 years. They were not able to tell us what the outcome of that case was, so I'm not even sure if that, you know, was relevant to our discussions. I'm not sure the outcome under that investigation. And the...and another one, yeah, was five. I had prepared an amendment earlier to strike the provision entirely so that there is no limit, especially since it only affects one case that we've seen in the last three, four years. So, yeah, I'm trying to make an amendment to the amendment, I guess, to...instead of limiting it to 10 years, to remove the limit altogether. So, I think that's been sent to the clerks.
Senator, do you have an amendment to that in writing already, or...
I did, but I'm sorry, my staff just informed me that the Internet just went down in the office, so not sent. It's...it would be to strike the entire section.
Okay. In that event, then, to strike the entire section would address an objection to that, or you just want to take everything and strike it as it relates to this section?
Correct, from the subsection 6.
There has been an amendment to an amendment. Anyone speaking...wishing to speak on Senator Therese's amendment?
And just so that the effect would be, then, instead of 10 years, it's...there's no limit on the time.
I understand. So, would be to delete that.
I object to that, Madam Speaker.
Senator Torres, you have the floor. You are recognized.
I raise an objection to that, Madam Speaker. I'm proposing 10 years, so I would like that the body entertain that, and if not, then they can address whether to strike it altogether. But I'm respectfully asking for 10 years, so I object to the amendment to the amendment.
So, there's an objection to that. Anyone else wishing to speak? Minority Leader, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So, I'm speaking on the amendment to the amendment.
You are speaking on the Therese Terlai amendment, to the Torres amendment, which strikes out the 10 years to just deleting it and not having one.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I stand in full support of that amendment. As I mentioned earlier, you know, this is something that's been in place since 1950, I think it was like 1953, if I'm not mistaken, when the Civil Service Commission was put into place, and at that time, limitations was not in the foreseeable stars, because this is about the injustice or in the...this is also about the inmerits of an individual, people getting into positions, and let's...let's put it out there. A lot of these areas come when it's political hires. We need to remember the thousands and thousands of government in Guam employees that went through the process, that qualified with merit to get their positions. Why are we putting a statute of limitations now when these individuals had to go through the same rules and regs that were placed on the...in this particular law? So, Madam Speaker, I think, Madam Chair, I think we should maintain that for all government in Guam employees that had to go through this merit system to get their job. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, as proffered...or the amendment to the amendment as proffered by Senator Therese, anyone wishing to speak? There has been an objection. If not, Senator Therese, you may close, or do you want to call for the vote?
Call for the vote, Madam Speaker.
There has been objection. All those in favor of Therese Terlai's amendment signify by raising your hand. We are back to Senator Torres's amendment.
Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, if I may ask the body to reconsider the vote, we had another colleague who just walked in, so I'm asking the body if they can reconsider the last vote, motion to reconsider the last vote, and vote again on that last amendment.
Senator Terlai, the vote was made...I mean, Senator Tadegui, the vote was made. There has been an objection. If you're proffering, you're moving to reconsider the actions of the bodies, so make the motion, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. I ask that we reconsider the actions of the body.
On that motion, is there an objection? There is an objection. All those in favor to reconsider the actions of the bodies signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. Motion fails. On the amendment as proffered by Senator Therese, I mean Senator Mary Torres. Senator, will you like to speak on that amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
Please proceed.
So, we're discussing the amendment to limit the statute of limitations to 10 years. I rise in support of that amendment. I went on the record numerous times to state that I believe that the 10 years would be sufficient, and that was in an arbitrary amount of time. I thought about it, as I'm sure others have, that it may transcend maybe one or two administrations back-to-back. I also believe probably more fundamental to the argument is that 10 years is a sufficient amount of time to cure if there is a shortcoming in one's skill or required credential through time and grade. I think we've seen whenever you get promoted that you move up a particular grade and a couple steps over, that perhaps within the 10-year period, if it hasn't been cured, then you could certainly move for adverse action if the employee has demonstrated sufficiently their incompetence. So, I rise in support of this measure. I find it to be reasonable. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Castro. Anyone else on the Mary Torres amendment? Senator Pito, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, you know, I voted for the...for the First Amendment, but to me, whatever, even 10 years, as long as we extend the timeline or do away with the timeline, I'm for it, so if that fails, then I'm still going to vote for the 10 years. Thank you, Madam Speaker, if it's okay.
Thank you, Senator Pito. Anyone else on the Torres amendment? Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, Senator Mary, you may close on your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I understand that people have concerns, but we have to also be considerate of the Civil Service Commission, who has asked that a statute of limitations be put in place as...
Senator Torres, one moment, please. Colleagues, can you please respect and yield to the...Senator colleague who's speaking? Senator Tadegui, please. You have the floor. Senator, with all due respect, Senator Torres, you have the floor. I ask that my colleagues please respect the individual speaking. Senator Torres, you have the floor to close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The motion to extend from a statute of limitation of six months to 10 years, I think, is a very legitimate concession to make here, but the Civil Service Commission did, in fact, ask for a statute of limitations because they recognize that there are adverse consequences to employees who, through no fault of their own, errors are found in the original hiring process. So, it really is a balance that we talk about, what is fair to the employer, what is fair to the employee, what is fair to the process. And with regard to a statute of limitations not being in place originally, I want to remind everybody that, yes, the Organic Act called for a merit protection system. Yes, it was in the 1950s, but yes, we are a lawmaking body that convenes a legislative session every two years for the purpose of revisiting laws, either to repeal, revise, or reenact new laws. It is the nature of laws, so to say that something that occurred in 1953 must stand forever in perpetuity, we always...laws are enacted and changed to react to the situations of the time and to do what is best for the community. So, this concession, I think, 10 years, and I want to acknowledge, too, that we must keep in mind that when we're working on something, we have to yield to some degree on the people who are enforcing these, and if this is a reasonable request from them, then that comes with value, the value that we should heed their recommendations. So, I want to thank all those that...for their consideration of this motion.
On the Torres amendment, there has been an objection. All those in favor of Senator Mary Torres's amendment, please signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. One, two, three, four, five, six. Motion fails. Senator Torres, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Therese, you have several amendments. You are recognized on your amendments.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My first amendment is to remove lines 4 through 11 of Page 5 of the bill to strike subsection 6. That would effectively strike the statute of limits for making a request to the Civil Service Commission to investigate a complaint for hiring or promotion.
Senator Therese, we...if I'm not mistaken, we just...you just attempted that with the amendment to the amendment, and then you're doing it again?
It was an amendment to the amendment. Yeah, the amendment itself did not pass, so this is a standalone.
Okay. I will just confer to make sure that it's in order.
It's in order.
Ymina Chantai Cinco Nalas, the Turin Guam is back from recess. I mean Committee of the Hall is back from recess, I apologize colleagues. After conferring with the legal Senator Terlahey, this amendment is out of order at this time, but I understand you have several other amendments.
Yes, thank you Madam Speaker, I'm redoing that one, so while we're waiting for that, I'll proceed with the other amendment.
Please proceed.
All right, so the other amendment is on Section 5 of the bill. It's on page 7, line 4. So this section talks about civil service making rules and regulations relative to its duties under this post-audit framework. Now, the post-audit statute already says that the commission shall adopt rules and regulations to effectuate this section, including the requirement of a written complaint to initiate any investigation. So they, they already have authority to make rules. And as we know, across the government, all rules are made pursuant to what's called the AAA or the Administrative Adjudication Law. And that process requires the rules, you know, go through public hearing at the agency, and then when they're, you know, good to go, the agency sends it to the Attorney General, they send it to the governor, and then it comes to the legislature. So at all these stops, if you will, the, the rules and regulations have opportunity for more input, review, and, you know, to ensure that the, the public is heard. So, the bill puts in a, a kind of a special provision, would put a different provision into law that instead of abiding by the AAA, that the rules and regs would, would comply with this process that is spelled out here. So my amendment would just be to revert back to the AAA. So none of those steps is bypassed. They've said that they can comply with that, and, uh, so I would just ask that they do, just like every other agency, and especially this one. Because this one affects, as we talked about, employees and their livelihoods, and so the more that those are vetted, the better. And that, you know, this agency is also subject to quite a amount of lawsuits, and we want to make sure that AG review is not bypassed, which is what this bill does. It bypasses the review of the Attorney General. So we would just want to keep that intact by reverting to the original AAA Administrative Adjudication Law. So, my amendment strikes out most of it, and instead says, shall submit its proposed rules and regulations pursuant to the Administrative Adjudication Law. I'm adding those words in. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Therese. On the Therese Terlahey amendment, is there anyone wishing to speak? Senator Torres? Not? Are there any objections? Senator Torres, you have the floor.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that the, the reason that these rules and regulations, as CSC mentioned in the public hearing, why Section 5 was, was added was to address and expedite the promulgation of rules and regs. It presently isn't, was in the AAA process. It was with the Attorney General's office, and it, and it's languished there for 10 years. And notwithstanding Civil Service Commission repeatedly asking for any progress on it. So this was a way to attempt to expedite it, as, as Mr. Leon Guerrero mentioned again today. So, I, I wouldn't necessarily object, but I, I think that, you know, we may just end up in the same situation that, that they're at right now. And to the comment that the AG's office has left out with this process, because it will go through a public hearing with the legislature, you know, the opportunity for them to comment is absolutely there. But it also relieves them of, of, of what right now has, seems to have been a burden, because they haven't had any action in 10 years. But I just wanted to make that comment, but I won't necessarily object.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Senator Lee, you recognize on the amendment. Senator Clint, did you have your hand raised? If not, colleagues, or Senator Therese, would you like to close on your amendment, or call for the vote?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, yes. Just to close, yeah, I would just like to thank my colleagues for their support, and that, yeah, I think that rules and regs, it's not the first agency to tell us that rules and regs are stuck at the Attorney General's office, and 10 years precedes the current, you know, Attorney General, so that's a huge issue. And we need to really get to the bottom of it. A lot of times, you know, when we ask the Attorney General, "What are the delay?", they would say, "We've given it back to the agencies for, you know, what the problems are", but we don't know the, I don't know the exact situation in this case. But I, I do believe that that is a problem, and I don't want to bypass that just because of the delay. I want them to resolve if it's a legal issue that they're stuck on, or, or something, that they resolve it. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Therese. On, on the Therese Terlahey amendment, is there, are there any objections? There is an objection. All those who, who wish to support the amendment as proffered by Senator Therese Terlahey signify by raising your hand. Motion fails. Senator Terlahey, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Has the clerk uploaded the other amendment?
It's uploaded, Senator.
Okay, so to subsection 6? Okay. So, this is an amendment to subsection 6. It's striking out the first two sentences of the subsection, which talk about a statute of limits. And it's going to leave in the section that says, "Having begun the investigation in compliance with this section, the commission may take an action on the complaint, so long as it's within the 180 days." But it takes out the six-month statute of limits on, on post-audits that they could do. So, that would be my amendment, Madam Speaker. And as we've heard, you know, yeah, there are, if, if this six-month rule was passed, we were talking about two audits that they would be allowed to do. And even, you know, requests from agencies and all the other audits that they have done over the last three years would be not allowed by the only authority on Guam that has any kind of credence to do such an audit. An ability to look into personnel files and hiring and all of that, that we do not have. So I would like to strengthen the civil service in this regard. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Therese. On the amendment, anyone wishing to speak on the amendment? Senator Minority Leader, and then Senator Torres, Minority Leader, you may proceed.
Sidos Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, um, can I just get a clarification on, on the drive, I mean, the, the number? Of the amendment, please?
It is SB 312TMT L4-11P5 revised.
Okay, thank you.
On the amendment, Senator Torres, you're recognized on Senator Therese's amendment.
I object to the amendment, Madam Speaker.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Minority Leader, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Once again, Madam Speaker, I stand in full support of, you know, taking out anything that has a statute of limitation with regards to the jobs of, of our government in Guam employees when they're going through the merit system. So, I ask my colleagues to reconsider, you know, the situation where all those other employees who've had to go through this merit system, all of them, thousands of them, who, who met that criteria, who met those, all of them, their qualifications needed to get this job, and not just a special few to let them go. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Minority Leader. Anyone else? Senator Torres on the amend, no. Anyone else, I'm sorry. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, Senator Therese, would you like to close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, yes. And, again, the majority of the people who are making these complaints are people who were bypassed for promotion, bypassed for hiring, who believe that the government of Guam is bypassing the rules. And we just want to assure them that we are going to do our part to ensure that the rules are not bypassed, whether in six months or 10 years, you know, when an administration changes, or management changes, or senators change, that whoever can get access and see something that was not done correctly, that we can correct those. But more importantly, that, you know, they're going to have faith in the process of hiring and promotion, that it is fair, that it is according to the rules, that people are qualified, and that we are holding them to those standards. And, and really, it's just that. And we don't want to say that because you've, you know, you've, you were, you outlasted the six months, that it's, it's correct, because it's not correct. It's wrong. It's incorrect. It was a mistake. It was a violation of the rules, and it, it should be fixed. And there are ways to fix it. I believe that will bring, you know, justice to all of those involved, if it was a true error. So, yeah. So my amendment removes the six months and removes the six-month statute of limits for the Civil Service Commission to do audits on hiring and promotion. And I, I ask my colleagues for their support. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Therese. There has been an objection to this amendment. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. In favor of Senator Therese? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Motion passes.
Madam Speaker, if I could ask for reconsideration on the, on the prior amendment regarding rules and regulations, please? Notwithstanding the rules, I move to reconsider that amendment on the rules and regulations, line 4, page 7, Section 5 of the bill.
There's, there is a motion to reconsider. Is there an objection? There is an objection. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Six, seven, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Motion carries. On the motion to amend.
Again, it's to amend the, the Section 5 of the bill, so that it would comply with the AAA, the Administrative Adjudication Law, and not bypass the Attorney General's office.
So on the amendment, as proffered by Senator Therese Terlahey, which is on page 7, line 4. Are there any objections? There is an objection. Senator Lee, would you, you have the floor.
Sidos Massey, Madam Speaker. I think, you know, in, in our conversation, it's been addressed and restated many times that the Attorney General's office will not be bypassed in the way that this bill is written. There's still an opportunity for the Attorney General to be heard when it comes to the legislature for a public hearing. In fact, there's an opportunity for every single person on the island of Guam if they'd like to register support or opposition to, to the matter at hand during the public hearing. And so there's still an opportunity for the public to be heard. The issue is, it's just, this has been a long, many, many years in the making. It's been held up for many, many, many years. And so we're, if you're interested in moving forward justice and having it heard as soon as possible, still allowing the members of our government to, and even the people of Guam, to have their concerns addressed and heard, there's still those options in the way that the bill is written. So I object to this amendment, again.
There has been an objection. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, want to call for the vote? All those in favor?
If I could close, Madam Speaker, just.
Allow you to close, Senator Therese.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the patience of, of my colleagues. It, it's just that AG review is different than community input. It's a very technical review, and sometimes rules get held up because, because of lawsuits. Because we're trying to reconcile the lawsuits, the different complaints, employee concerns, management concerns. The AG's the one who has to enforce these things. And, and I really think their input in this specific case is extremely, extremely important, and the last thing we want to bypass. And sometimes we can't get AG input here at the legislature. That's not mandated. That's like up to his discretion. But in the AAA process, it is mandated. And I, I think they need to resolve whatever it is that's holding it up at the AG, or the AG, you know, needs to respond. But the other thing is, you know, we're making special rules for a very important process. You know, I can't, I mean, but I want is that the same rules apply across the board. The AAA applies to every agency for less important rules. It should absolutely apply to this agency, the Civil Service Commission, for very, very important rules. That's, that's another thing. It's fairness. It's a, it's, you know, if it's good for AG to review rules and regs, which are very technical, in fact, I can't imagine it going forward without that, Madam Speaker. That is what is needed. That is how we are going to be able to deliberate on it even more efficiently. Thank you very much.
Senator Therese, there has been an objection to the amendment. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion passes. Any, anyone else? Minority Leader?
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Do you have an amendment?
Actually, Madam Speaker, if I have one minute, I'll, I'll explain, and then you can tell me how, how to move forward. Thank you. Just one minute.
Ymina Chantai Cinco Nalas, the Turin Guam's Committee of the Hall is back from recess. Minority Leader, I will recognize you for your motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and for the opportunity to explain the process on this. But as the amendment that was passed, not latter, but the one before, if we can have legal make the, making a motion at this point to have legal make any technical corrections mirroring these, these amendments.
On that motion, Senator Lee.
Just a point of inquiry, Madam Speaker. Can you please identify which amendment we're talking about? We passed five or six amendments in the last few minutes, so if you can maybe identify the line and the page number, I think that would be a great deal of help to legal counsel and to the, our colleagues.
I'll be happy to explain, and I'll be happy to explain, Madam Speaker, thank you. The amendment that was passed recently by Senator Terlahey is line 4-11, page 5, striking out the six-month statute of limitations. And it references in the bill, and the latter part, particularly in the legislative intent, it mentions six months there as well. So my motion was to have legal make those technical corrections to reflect this particular amendment, which is again on page 5, lines 4 and 11, referencing the striking out of the statute of limitations, I mean, the striking out the six months. You're welcome. Thank you.
On the amendment, as proffered by Minority Leader, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing, none. Motion carries. There are no more amendments to this bill. So, Senator Torres, would you like to close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. It's rather unfortunate that the Civil Service Commission approached this body to implement a statute of limitations, and to ask for certain things in the statute that would enable them to actually enforce their post-audit investigation findings. Right now, the way this statute is written, there are issues with it that have caused them to lose their cases, the post-audit investigation findings, and to lose the cases that are challenged in court. So my legislation was an earnest and honest attempt to correct those things in statute that were problematic from the Civil Service Commission's point of view. But since many in, in this hall believe that, that, that they have solutions that are contrary to what the Civil Service Commission believes, then so be it, Madam Speaker. And I gave it my best shot, but I think at this time, it is best to withdraw Bill 312-35LS. And thank you, colleagues, for the contributions towards that end.
Senator Torres, based on the standing rules, there must be a letter written to the, we're going to take a moment's recess. You must write a letter to the.
That is forthcoming.
Ymina Chantai Cinco Nalas, the Turin Guam's Committee of the Hall is back from recess. Assistant Majority Leader, can you motion us to rise, please? Yes. Majority Leader, please allow me. On a motion to rise.
Masca Hulu, I motion that we rise from Committee of the Hall.
On that motion, without any objection. Motion carries. Colleagues, we're going to take a moment's recess so we can transition. Colleagues, we're going to take a moment's recess so we can transition.
...
I mean, the 35th House of Representatives is back from recess. This time, Senator Regina Biscolet. I'll recognize you on Bill 340.
So this is Madam Speaker. I moved to set Bill 340 aside. We had received a memo from the Department of Revenue and Taxation, and we're preparing amendments into a substitute bill, which I'll be happy to introduce on the floor with all of the changes for my colleagues' consideration.
Thank you on that motion. Without any objection, seeing or hearing none, motion carries. We are now on Bill 302-C-35COR, as introduced by Senator Louise Munia. Senator Louise, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I moved to place Bill Number 302-35COR, introduced by myself, Louise B. Munia, which is an act to add a new subsection 18903 to Article 9 of Chapter 18, Title 22, Guam Code Annotated, and to amend the title of Article 9 of Chapter 18, Title 22, Guam Code Annotated, relative to prohibiting health insurance companies from canceling or reducing covered benefits for covered patients who enroll in qualified clinical trials. To the third reading, and I wish to discuss.
Senator Munia, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act, also known as Obamacare, prohibits insurance companies at this moment from canceling health insurance coverage if the patient participates in a clinical trial. This bill prevents insurance companies from canceling coverage for cancer patients who participate in a clinical trial. It does not require the insurance company to cover the clinical trial. Here's an example of a situation that the ACA is trying to prevent. A cancer patient enrolls in a clinical trial for a new chemotherapy drug. Without the ACA protection, health insurance companies could cancel all coverage. The drug company only pays for the drug and the cost of the doctor's time to write reports on the drug. The insurance company could cancel coverage for administering the medication, the oncologist's fees, x-rays, CT scans, surgeries, and everything else that the cancer patient needs. Now, if this bill becomes law, the insurance company will not be able to cancel the patient's cancer treatment. The insurance company will not be required to pay for the standard chemo drugs since the patient is using the experimental drug that is being tested. If the experimental drug is not effective, the patient is allowed to continue cancer treatment, and the insurance company will and should cover the cost of traditional chemo drugs. This continual coverage requirement does not apply to every clinical trial. There are only six organizations that qualify for clinical trials under the Affordable Care Act. The same organizations are also covered by this bill, and it's listed in the bill itself. Madam Speaker, I just hope that none of us or any of our family members ever have to go through the process of searching for clinical trials. And I hope that I get my support from my colleagues to help all the patients who are in this situation. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Munia. On the main motion, anyone wishing to speak? If not, Senator Teresa, I'll recognize you on the main motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to raise a few questions based on the testimony. So at the public hearing, several of the insurance companies testified and said they would be submitting in writing more. So I was able to read the written testimony, and I guess I just had a couple of questions. So first of all, this bill proposes to pretty much dictate what the insurance companies are going to cover in the event that the federal mandates are lifted for the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act. And so one of the -- and these changes that are going to be made by this bill would extend to everybody covered by insurance, not just government of Guam insurance. And I just want to make that clear because the bill was referred to the committee regarding government of Guam insurance only. So private employers, who currently may be, you know, considering reducing coverage or changing their, you know, plans for their employees due to the pandemic and the reduction of income, this, yeah, we want to know for sure, you know, if this is going to help with the patients or hurt them. So most of them said the bill will allow them to continue to cover as is required by their respective plans. So if they are currently covering it, they will continue. And that they made it sound like, you know, this bill should not make too much change because one provider said, Select Care, said they do not foresee any changes in this part of the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act. However, they did say, but they would abide by their own contracts. I think several contractors, insurance providers, testified similarly. And one said actually that by requiring them to do something that they're not doing in their current contracts, we might be increasing the cost. And we have to be very careful at this time, if, you know, not to force an increase in cost of providing health insurance because so many people are dropping out of health insurance, so many companies are dropping out of health insurance right now, that we might be increasing the cost for those who remain covered by health insurance. And we don't want to do that. Of course, that's an unintended effect, and we don't want that. So that's my only concern, is that some of those things were pointed out, that, you know, whether we would be impacting the cost of care for those who are covered, where whether, you know, we would be forcing companies to cut out all insurance altogether. And we don't want to do that. And so I guess maybe if the author would yield. That is my issue. It's just there were some financial implications that were unintended that might be effectuated through this bill. And I just wanted to see the sponsor would yield to those concerns.
Senator Munia, would you like to yield to Senator Teresa's question?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker. And again, thank you to the retiring speaker for all of her concerns, very valid concerns, of course, based on the public hearing that we just had with the insurance companies coming out. And again, I want to thank Frank Campillo from Select Care for being that role model that says that they continue to cover even if they, if their patients enroll in clinical trials. He did say that they don't cancel any of the coverage. Now, part of my concern with some of the testimony was that the bills, they bundled up the three different bills in some of their testimony. So it was really not clear if they were specifically talking about one bill or another. So that's one of my issues with some of the other insurance companies' testimonies, that they provided testimony in regards to three different bills and not specifically one or the other. The Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act, Madam Speaker, is available to all residents of the 50 states. We were told from the Department of Revenue and Taxation that Title I of the Affordable Care Act does not apply to Guam. And that is where the portion that says that it should not, it will not cancel coverage if they enroll in clinical trials. So that's what this bill is doing, is allowing us to afford really sick patients to continue their coverage even if they enroll in a clinical trial. I hope that makes a little bit of sense. But Guam is not covered under Title I of the Affordable Care Act, according to the Director of Revenue and Taxation.
Senator Teresa.
Thank you very much to the retiring speaker for yielding to that question. The other recommendation that was made was that Section 18903 is properly clarified to state that the routine cost is based on the benefits or services covered by the health plan. And I realize that if we make this amendment, it's pretty much saying whatever they've originally allowed, they will continue to allow under your health plan. So I'm not sure if that meets the intent of the bill, but I don't think that change was incorporated. So this definition of routine costs is a little bit vague, and it just says, you know, this is, so Section 18903A, yeah, shall continue coverage of routine costs. And then they define that, or do they? I guess, if the author would just yield to that, that was the other recommendation as to how do we define routine costs? And the insurance companies want it to be defined by routine costs, is something I'm already covering. And of course, I will continue to cover. So I don't know, do we effectuate any change by this bill, I guess, then, if that is the case?
Senator Munia, would you like to yield?
Yes, thank you. So the routine costs are defined by the insurance contract, not specifically in the law. So the routine costs are defined by the insurance company.
So if an insurance company decides to change their contract going forward as to what is covered, they would be allowed? Would they be allowed to do that? If I could ask the author to yield, Madam Speaker, if she was willing.
Senator Munia.
Madam, yeah, if I just have a moment to reassess. Thank you. Thank you.
That's my last.
And yeah, so the way I understand it, I mean, I'm not an insurance expert, but I would imagine that they wouldn't be able to change any of the, any of the contract, anything that's in the contract until it's time for renewal again. So they can't change anything mid, I guess midterm, but that would be up to the insurance company.
Thank you. Senator Blahie.
All right. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to the author. So, so the bill provides very clearly that health insurance companies are not required to cover the cost of clinical trials, but they are required by this act to cover routine costs during approved clinical trials. So any other costs that they may have covered and they are, and a person is undergoing clinical trials, they shall continue to cover that. And otherwise, they don't become ineligible or disqualified from those, the diabetic care, what other, other routine care that they are undertaking. I'm hoping I'm understanding this correctly. My concern, of course, is I don't want the unintended financial consequences to other subscribers or, you know, that any other companies would find costs of insurance too prohibitive because that's the crisis, I think, that we are facing right now. So I want to thank, thank the author for yielding to my questions and thank you for the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Theresa. Anyone else on the main motion? Anyone else? If not, Senator Munia, you may close.
Thank you again, Madam Speaker, and I thank you, I thank my colleagues for their, well, the previous speaker for their questions. Again, just a reminder that the bill does not require the health insurance to cover the experimental drugs or any part of the clinical trial. It really is just preventing insurance companies from canceling the coverage of sick patients like, for example, if they became a cancer patient and they were still continuing some treatments with diabetes or so, for example, like, like chronic diseases that participate in a federally approved or funded clinical trial and a few other drugs that have an investigational drug application with the FDA or are FDA exempt from the application process. I thank my colleagues for their support and I, I hope that we would give these really sick patients and cancer patients an opportunity to continue coverage. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, Senator Munia, to the voting file, please.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill Number 302-35COR into the third reading voting file.
On that motion, are there any objections, seeing or hearing? None. Motion carries. Colleagues, we are now on Bill Number 62-35COR. Senator Will Castro, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill Number 62-35 Committee on Roles as substituted by the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Maritime Transportation, Power and Energy Utilities, and Emergency Response introduced by myself, which is an act to add a new Article 14 to Chapter 1 of Division 1 Title V Guam Code annotated relative to codifying the Guam Office of Homeland Security as established under Executive Order Number 2003-13 and relative to creating the Marianas Regional Fusion Center, the Division of Cybersecurity and Critical Infrastructure Security, and the Guam Emergency Management Advisory Council to be known as the Homeland Security, Critical Infrastructure, and Emergency Management Modernization Act of 2020. Onto the third reading file and I'd like to discuss it.
On that motion, Senator Will, you may proceed.
Actually, I'm going to move to forego my opening and closing remarks and move to the bill to the third reading. I was just kidding, Madam Speaker. Senator Jim promised that he'd laugh if, if I, if I explained it in English. So if anything, I accrued, if anything, I accrued 90 minutes since COVID, so I'm going to give that to Senator Marsh. I'm just kidding. Madam Speaker, in all seriousness, Bill Number 62 is a measure that would modernize the Office of Homeland Security by permanizing it in the Guam statute. The measure identifies and permanizes the Marianas Regional Fusion Center in addition to addressing critical functions of the Fusion Center. As is stated in the legislative findings and intent of the bill and reinforced at the public hearings as well as the subsequent informal roundtables on the same with subject matter experts and various stakeholders, it is abundantly clear that we, as a community, must move to take the Office of Guam Homeland Security and its associated functions to the next level. Madam Speaker, if I could explain further for the benefit of my colleagues and the general public. The Office of Homeland Security was established a little over 17 years ago via Executive Order Number 2003-13. And at the time, its immediate creation was necessitated as a result of contemporary threats at the time, such as the act of terror on 9/11 in Manhattan. But it was also created in anticipation of future threats, ma'am, many of which have come to light, such as cyber warfare, cyber terrorism, cyber crime, the country and island's most essential financial communications, information, security systems, which may result in failures as a direct result of those attacks. And also under threat would be our physical infrastructure, among many other things. At a regional customs conference that I attended not too long ago, I think it's in the last two years, Madam Speaker, it was interesting to learn of that emergent theme, which is relative to intellectual property and financial networks. And it's proliferating with the advent of high-speed networks throughout the globe, the dark web and secured, undetected, undecipherable crypto technologies. Things like the proliferation of counterfeit goods, purchase of narcotics, the theft, sale of intellectual property, all via the dark web is a whole class of threats unto itself. And I guess my point would be, Madam Speaker, that these novel threats to our way of life and to our country and our homeland is here and we must harden our homeland security posture. Suffice it to say through this past decade and a half that this model, when it was created, it was just a model, it was a concept at the time, that the homeland security model has withstood the test of time and is in fact a critically necessary instrument of our government today. Homeland Security was created to coordinate and facilitate all government of Guam military, federal liaison response agencies and their resources to mitigate, prepare, respond to, and recover from any and all types of emergencies in order to protect lives, the environment, and property of our island. Further, that such an entity is to develop and coordinate implementation of a comprehensive plan against terrorism, invasion, insurrection, rebellion, lawless violence, or threat thereof. And with this said, Madam Speaker, the overarching goal of Bill 62 is straightforward. The bill moves to ensure that the Guam Office of Homeland Security is codified in statute. If I could summarize for my colleagues, the substantive components of the bill are to also establish the Marianas Regional Fusion Center in statute to establish the Division of Cybersecurity and Critical Infrastructure Security and further establish and articulate the functions of the Guam Emergency Management Advisory Council by statute. Former Homeland Security Advisor P. Tim Uggan appeared before the committee to offer his general support of the bill and stated that the bill would further the agency's ability to remain a steady, enduring entity. Pierre Tim Uggan also stated that it's important that the agency not be subject to change by withdrawal or amendment of an executive order. Colleagues, the passage of Bill 62 establishes the permanency necessary to maintain a level of business continuity for Gov. Guam.
You done?
I'm done. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I could go on.
Senator Will, thank you very much. On the main motion, anyone wishing to speak? Assistant Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Sinemah Assi, Maskehalu. And I'm glad to hear that I have 90 minutes. So I shall begin. No, in all seriousness as well, I'm very pleased to be able to support this bill because over the last two years during my time here and certainly during this pandemic, I've grown to just recognize and understand and really appreciate the work that the homeland security does. And so codifying it, making sure that it has permanency and that it can't be something just written away by one person or amended by one person without others weighing in, I think is important and what this bill strives to do. I did notice and appreciate some of the additional elements that are added in here. One activity that I think will bode well for us is to consolidate overlapping responsibilities that may exist throughout the government. And when we talk about the government, we are talking about working towards ways to streamline, to make us more efficient, to improve ourselves in those ways. And I, I think that element of the bill does just that. And there were other elements that the author mentioned about the Marianas Fusion Center and others. If I could ask the author of the bill if there are any other elements other than the ones that he's mentioned and the one that I mentioned about consolidating overlapping responsibilities? If there's anything else that we should be aware of that is different than how the Homeland Security Office has been operating or the duties and responsibilities it currently has?
Senator Will, would you like to yield?
Sure. I gladly take the question. The short answer is yes, Senator. But at this point in time, after numerous discussions with the subject matter experts and other stakeholders, these are the elements that we all have come to an agreement on. But yeah, there's certainly other threats that haven't been identified and opportunities as well. But this would be, if I may, the solid consensus of all those who participated. And I'm sure they'll address it in the future as well.
Sinemah Assi, Maskehalu. Yes, that's very helpful to hear and we imagine that the responsibilities and the ways that the homeland security will be looking out for the, the good for us all will continue to grow with the work that they do. And so in looking at page three, and I was looking at the fact that they're going to be having responsibilities to work towards keeping terrorism, invasion, insurrection, rebellion, lawlessness, violence, and those sort of threats at bay. And it, it got me to thinking that I know that they also keep tabs on drug trafficking, which of course is a huge concern to us all. And I like that there are elements in here where it discusses working with all the government of Guam branches, but not just stopping there, as the author had mentioned, with all agencies of the federal government. And to looking at the situation nationally as is needed, interacting with states as is needed, and other territories or freely associated states. And so this really provides a lot of flexibility, much-needed flexibility, I believe, for this agency, is to be able to look at us domestically within the island, but then to be able to look within the archipelago, the region within which we sit, but then also in other fellow jurisdictions that have similar political status or similar national ties. So I appreciate that element there. I do want to have one clarification on page five, line three, so where it mentions, "The advisor shall coordinate the activities of all the executive branch agencies pertaining to terrorism-related issues." And so I understood that one. But if he could explain, including but not limited to legislative issues, what he meant in particular there with legislative issues?
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Castro, would you like to yield?
I do. This is lifted language from the original resolution, but the, my operational understanding of this particular clause is to effectively liaise with these entities. So to be the primary liaising official for and on behalf of the governor's office.
Senator Taitino.
Sinemah Assi, for that answer, I'll, I'll consider working that one through and I'm sure the good author will be able to give me some examples. And I do just want to point out, I reiterate, his discussion about the need for cybersecurity. We had a newspaper article just recently about the University of Guam and how it had been hacked into. And there had been attempts to hold the data of the university for ransom. And so it's very important to know that we have active entities looking out for us in these regards. There are stories that we hear of that sound like they're a movie plot or that they happened somewhere else, but indeed we see that they can happen to us individually or within private companies and even for an entity as large and, and well-established as the university. So again, I provide my support to this bill and I thank the author for yielding to a couple of questions.
Anyone else on the main motion? Anyone else? If not, Senator Theresa, I'm sorry, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Okay, just want to confirm, we're using the substitute version of the bill, right? Okay. So the substitute version added a lot of things that was not on the original bill at the public hearing, so, but I just want to confirm. So for example, on page three, 14.102, it talks about duties and responsibilities and it says, "All the duties and responsibilities as established by the executive order are hereby established by law." But I would think it's more proper to spell those out. Are they spelled out in this law already? Or are there more that are not in here that were in the executive order that you're intending to also make into law? If the author would yield, yes, please.
Senator Castro, would you like to yield?
Thank you. I can appreciate the observation by my colleague. Actually, there isn't, this is not new language, it's reflected word for word. It's just kind of moved around at the request of legal, the legal bureau, and especially the Oversight Committee. The answer to 14.102 is further articulated in 14.1041, right below that, Senator. So I believe as a matter of function and format, we were advised to include that top language there, but it's further articulated on line 15 of page three of the same document.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I appreciate that response. And so, yes, that they are articulated and very detailed in 14.104.1 is, gives me assurance that we're not talking about something that's not in front of us right now. So, all right, so this advisor for homeland security is given a lot of authority. And then on this particular section, it says, "Not only does he have authority over, to cooperate and coordinate efforts and those of the office with all branches of the government, all agencies of federal government, civil or military, agencies of governments of all states, territories, freely associated subdivisions of those governments, and private entities within Guam." And then foreign persons or entities. And, and then private agencies, you know, I'm going down to number C, private agencies within Guam that would help cover its mission. I don't think this type of authority is given to any agency on Guam that they are going to, you know, make arrangements with foreign persons or entities or private entities, private agencies, all governments. And so I guess I just wanted to find from the sponsor what, what, I don't know, comfort level does he have with, with that type of a mandate? And how is this information going to go beyond the one person? You know, how are we going to know? You know, how are we going to know what that one person is doing versus, yeah, how would the rest of the government know what this one person with this type of authority is doing?
Thank you. Senator Castro, would you like to yield?
Sure. Yes, ma'am. First of all, thank you. Thank you again, Senator, for the question. We do, there is ample precedent that we've experienced, Senator, Madam Speaker, in terms of a similar function. The governor's authorized representative in times of natural disaster, as an example. And I want to draw your attention to the key phrase, "The coordination and facilitation of discussions," because this was a contentious issue, not in terms of this bill, because, again, it lifts language from the executive order, and it's pretty standard across the nation. What was interesting to observe in the conversations with the subject matter experts and stakeholders was exactly that concept of coordination and facilitation versus having direct-line authority. So as we see in natural disasters or other types of acts of terrorism, usually the governor's authorized representative, and in this case, who is now known as a special assistant, that is, the person's official designation on the staffing pattern, is going to be changed to advisor, but serve the same function in these times of emergency or otherwise some kind of distress. The assurance that this person will have the authority to quote-unquote "coordinate and facilitate" rests squarely on the shoulders of the governor of Guam. This individual and the office that we're establishing by statute is really going to be a creature, an auxiliary of the office of the governor, and in my opinion, rightfully so. So I'm not sure if that provides you additional comfort, ma'am, but I provided some precedent, and I provided the context by which we were comfortable with lifting the language as it was originally included in the resolution 2003-13.
Senator Theresa, you still have the floor. You have a couple of minutes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that our efforts will be coordinated among all our branches and all these entities. So coordination, I appreciate. If we... The author could also just clarify, the Office of Civil Defense is not mentioned in this bill like it was in the original bill. What is the status of the Office of Civil Defense in relation to this office, this newly-created office?
Senator Castro, would you like to yield?
Of course. And I can fully appreciate that question as well. Senator, just to be clear for my colleagues and the listening audience, and in civil defense and homeland security, this is not a reorganization bill. And I'm not suggesting that the question was leaning that way. As it stands, there are some opportunities for improvement in terms of the relationship between the two offices and other entities, I may notwithstanding. But at this point in time, again, it was agreed upon that the solid consensus would be to establish the Office of Homeland Security, MRFC, and the division within MRFC, which is the Marianas Regional Fusion Center, by statute. And then from there, sit down and have a conversation about how that could be further articulated to represent the interests of the territory. But civil defense was deliberately left out of this to preserve the fidelity of their programs. It's a very complex discussion that needs to be had, perhaps with yourself and the 36 as well, Senator, and that's because there's federal funds that are tied to their operation as well. So again, in summary, this was a brief window of opportunity for us to solidify the Office of Homeland Security and codify it. That's really the only intent that I'm hoping to accomplish with this bill.
Thank you. So my last concern then is just on the 14.107, is it establishes the Guam Emergency Management Advisory Council to advise and assist the governor of Guam, the lieutenant governor, and the homeland security advisor with respect to all aspects. And then it lists all the agencies and departments that will be part of this. And I expect that, you know, the coordination will actually occur at this level here. And so I'd like to propose an amendment, and I think it should be with the clerks now, that the Guam legislature be included in this. And I know that in practice, they have included the legislature in emergency response access, and I would like them to be included here so that the Guam legislature can be informed as well as things are happening.
Senator Theresa, can you just read it? It's being uploaded now, but can you just read the amendment, please?
Yes. All right, so it's... All right, on subsection A, where it says, "The members..." The members shall be... Right now, the bill says, "The members shall..." "The members of the GEMAC shall be the governor of Guam, the lieutenant governor of Guam, and the homeland security advisor..." Wait, I'm sorry. Sorry. Yes, the governor of Guam, the lieutenant governor of Guam, and I'm inserting the words, "the Guam legislature," right there, right after the lieutenant governor of Guam, "the Guam legislature," comma.
On the amendment, anyone wishing to speak? Are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Motion carries. Senator Theresa, you have a minute.
Thank you. I'd just like to, you know, commend the author of the bill. I know that, you know, there's been a lot of talk over the years of establishing this. I think we could still use some more clarification as to exactly, you know, where the parameters end, because we're giving them huge authority over our data on criminal and cybersecurity, everything. And I know, you know, what we need is this information to work for us. So I want to make sure that when it's built, that it's built to, in return, work for the police department, you know, help them to get the data that they need, where are the pockets, and all of that. And I know that they've been working on that for many years. Same thing with, you know, their cybersecurity. We have an Office of Technology, and I just want to make sure we're working, you know, consistently to move forward and that everybody gets what they need to do their jobs effectively. But otherwise, I support the intent of the bill, and I hope that we can clarify the Office of Civil Defense. And I don't want to impede anybody's ability to manage those federal funds that are coming in. So I appreciate the changes that have been made to the bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you to the author.
Thank you, Senator Theresa. On the main motion, anyone else wishing to speak? Senator Perez?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just have a question for the author of the bill, so...
Take your question.
Thank you. So in the fiscal note, it mentioned that current costs... Well, basically, it's federally funded, but that currently their budget is 1.2 million. And should... I guess the question would be, is there potential for it to be funded locally now that it's permanized?
Senator Will, would you like to yield to Senator Perez's inquiry?
Sure, I could take that question. I'm actually, Senator, in full disclosure, I'm not sure what the mix is with federal and local funding, but I can't...
Senator Castro, can you address the podium?
But I can tell you that the functions articulated in the bill are actually going on right now. There is a regional fusion center, so we're going to codify that. But again, without a great degree of certainty, I don't know the mix if it's 80/20 or 100% federally funded. So I guess the potential, the answer that I'd like to see happen, the potential's always there for local funding if it presents itself.
Senator Perez?
Actually, if I can restate the question, because the bill is now permanizing it in GCA, does that mean it has to be locally funded?
Senator, can you address the podium, please? To ask the question, address the podium, and then I'll yield the question.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
My apologies. Yes, if I can request a follow-up question?
Yes, you may. Please proceed.
Okay. I guess the question, if I can restate it, is through this bill, by permanizing it, would that require local funding through the general fund?
Thank you. Senator Castro, would you like to yield?
Yes, ma'am, I could take the question. So I don't believe, I don't believe so, Senator. In the current staffing pattern of the government of Guam, based on my experiences, there are positions, there are actual divisions and positions that are articulated in, let's say, a budget act, as an example, that are locally filled positions but federally funded. We see that at the Department of Education, and I believe also perhaps at the Bureau of Statistics and Plan. So the short answer would be no. I don't think there's anything that would compel the government of Guam from subsuming these financial responsibilities to meet the statute.
Thank you, Senator Castro. Senator Perez, you still have the floor.
Is there a way we can confirm that? I'm sorry, if I can ask a follow-up question to the author?
You still have time, you may.
Yeah, I was wondering if we can confirm that with the Office of Homeland Security, if that is an issue that was brought up or potential jeopardizing...
So you're asking for a moment's recess to ask Homeland Security?
Yeah, that could be verified, perhaps. It could be done offline, too. I just would like some confirmation on that.
I'll give you a moment's recess to verify. I'll give you a moment's recess to verify. Senator Perez, I understand you've got some answers. You still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yeah, so I guess if the author can provide some response.
Senator Castro, would you like to yield?
Yes, Madam Speaker. But if I may redirect to the Oversight Chair, he had some communication from someone from Civil Defense who might provide some insight.
Say that again, Senator Castro.
If Senator Rogel would yield and answer the question on our behalf. I appreciate that.
I will go ahead and ask for Senator Rogel. Would you like to yield?
Sure, Madam Speaker. During the recess, I spoke to Administrator of the Office of Civil Defense, Charles Estévez, and he spoke about his understanding is that essentially, currently, the Office of Homeland Security and Civil Defense are both federally funded, right? Civil Defense is established by Guam law, but they continue to receive federal funds and operate in that capacity. This would create Office of Homeland Security under Guam law. So the question is, would we have to fund it if the federal government stopped funding it? So, yes, if we wanted to continue keeping it around. So we establish it by Guam law, but it would behoove us, of course, to continue to fund something that we established through a local law. That said, not every office established by Guam law gets funded. I believe an example would be the Bureau of Women's Affairs. That was established in the 90s, and I think it went for quite a while without any funding. Recently, it's been sort of reestablished through funding. In fact, I think we're the ones who gave, I believe this legislature gave funding to the Office, the Bureau of Women's Affairs in this legislature, I believe. We're the ones who reinstated some funding to it as it had been somewhat defunct for a while due to a lack of funding. So, of course, it would behoove us to fund as much as possible anything that we've created. But at the same time, it's not, of course, it's up to whatever legislature is in control at the time to decide how they want to fund agencies throughout the government of Guam. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Senator Perez, does that help?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. And thank you to the Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else on the main motion? If not, Senator Woy, you may close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just have a, if I can make a motion to allow Legislative Council to make non-substantive technical changes, for example, page five, line 13, page five, line 13, to add a period. Sorry, that must have got lost in the transfer.
On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Motion carries. Senator Castro, you still have the floor.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Madam Speaker, if I could, I'd like to motion to add the following cosponsors, if they'd be willing to be added. I move to add Senator Clint Rogel, the Oversight Committee Chair, Senator Joe San Agustin, Speaker Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Senator Kelly Marsh Titino, and my colleagues. And anybody else, Madam Speaker, for that matter, if they want to, if they want, just show your hands. But at least those, if they agree.
On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Motion carries. On the motion to the voting file, Senator Castro, move to the voting file.
Sure. And would you like me to close, or should I just move? That's okay.
You're more than welcome to close, Senator Castro. I'll give you the time.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'm pleased that two former Homeland Security Advisor officials, two administrators from Civil Defense, through their submitted testimony, support this measure. These individuals, as the committee report will reflect, are credible, given their training, education, firsthand experiences in that space. Their input in the conceptualization and early drafting is greatly appreciated. Again, as I underscored, it's not a reorganization measure. With that said, I want to thank the former Governor, the Honorable Felix Perez Camatso, for his foresight in establishing the Office of Homeland Security and the Advisory Council through EO in 2003, to also the immediate past Governor, the Honorable Eddie Bazacalvo, for expanding the scope of the office and working with our local and regional partners on issues to establish the Marianas Regional Fusion Center. Masas paschat para este sheha ki legislatura, para todos hamzu, ni men menyeluhu para uatu dan mitu. Thank you very much, Senator, all of you senators who lent a hand in solidifying the piece. Finenena donkulu no agredesina benai estino gehilo gikumitea si Senator Clint Rogel, si Senator Joe San Agustin loqui. Hamzu na tzotnik mone estina priniponi pogo. Honrepli gehilo hago. Sudus masi puti honimu na una iu puti esti loqui. Thank you, Madam Speaker, to all those who shepherd this piece forward. I really appreciate the time, the privilege, and the opportunity to make a difference and strengthen our homeland security posture. With that said, Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill Number 62-35, Committee on Roles, as substituted by the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Maritime, Transportation, Power, Energy Utilities, and Emergency Response, onto the third reading file.
On that motion to move Bill 62-35-COR to the voting file, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Motion carries. Minority Leader, you're recognized on Bill 377-35, oh, I apologize. Please forgive me. He is still on the agenda. Bill 340-35-COR, Senator Lee, are you ready? She asked to just put the, all the amendments that were talked about, to put it in a substituted form. Are you ready? I will recognize you on Bill 340-35-COR.
I thought that was set aside, point of order, Madam Speaker. I thought that bill was set aside, just as we've set aside other bills. The motion was to set it aside. Period.
Again, Senator Turlahi, I will tell you that this bill was, as it is, on the agenda. There was a motion just to, to make sure that all of the amendments were intact and that would be submitted in substituted form, and that when she's ready to go back on. We are at that stage right now. Unless you have an objection to hearing it at this time, I will recognize Senator Regina Bisco Lee. Senator Lee, you are recognized.
Sudus masi, Madam Speaker, and thank you again to my colleagues, especially to the Oversight Chair and Appropriations for continuing the discussion on Bill 340-35-COR. Madam Speaker, at this time, I'd like to further substitute Bill 340-35 on the floor to incorporate some of the amendments that were requested to address some of the concerns raised during the Committee of the Whole discussions and by the Department of Revenue and Taxation. And I move that we accept the substitute bill. And I can go through some of the changes made for the benefit of my colleagues and the public.
I will take it as a motion first. On the motion to accept, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Is there an objection?
I believe that the substitute bill has been uploaded onto our file.
We will take a moment's recess. Yimina Chente, Cinco Nellas, the Turin Guam is back from recess. Yimina Chente, Cinco Nellas, the Turin Guam is back from recess. Yimina Chente, Cinco Nellas, the Turin Guam is back from recess. Senator Perez, I understand you've got some answers. Senator Perez, I understand you've got some answers. Senator Perez, I understand you've got some answers. You still have the floor. You still have the floor. You still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yeah, so I guess if the author can provide some response. Yeah, so I guess if the author can provide some response. Yeah, so I guess if the author can provide some response.
Senator Castro, would you like to yield? Senator Castro, would you like to yield? Senator Castro, would you like to yield?
Yes, Madam Speaker. Yes, Madam Speaker. Yes, Madam Speaker. But if I may redirect to the Oversight Chair, But if I may redirect to the Oversight Chair, But if I may redirect to the Oversight Chair, he had some communication from someone from Civil Defense he had some communication from someone from Civil Defense he had some communication from someone from Civil Defense who might provide some insight. who might provide some insight. who might provide some insight.
Say that again, Senator Castro. Say that again, Senator Castro. Say that again, Senator Castro.
If Senator Rogel would yield and answer the question on our behalf. If Senator Rogel would yield and answer the question on our behalf. If Senator Rogel would yield and answer the question on our behalf. I appreciate that. I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
I will go ahead and ask for Senator Rogel. I will go ahead and ask for Senator Rogel. I will go ahead and ask for Senator Rogel. Would you like to yield? Would you like to yield? Would you like to yield?
Sure, Madam Speaker. Sure, Madam Speaker. Sure, Madam Speaker. During the recess, I spoke to Administrator of the Office of Civil Defense, During the recess, I spoke to Administrator of the Office of Civil Defense, During the recess, I spoke to Administrator of the Office of Civil Defense, Charles Estévez, and he spoke about his understanding is that essentially, Charles Estévez, and he spoke about his understanding is that essentially, Charles Estévez, and he spoke about his understanding is that essentially, currently, the Office of Homeland Security and Civil Defense currently, the Office of Homeland Security and Civil Defense currently, the Office of Homeland Security and Civil Defense are both federally funded, right? are both federally funded, right? are both federally funded, right? Civil Defense is established by Guam law, Civil Defense is established by Guam law, Civil Defense is established by Guam law, but they continue to receive federal funds and operate in that capacity. but they continue to receive federal funds and operate in that capacity. but they continue to receive federal funds and operate in that capacity. This would create Office of Homeland Security under Guam law. This would create Office of Homeland Security under Guam law. This would create Office of Homeland Security under Guam law. So the question is, would we have to fund it So the question is, would we have to fund it So the question is, would we have to fund it if the federal government stopped funding it? if the federal government stopped funding it? if the federal government stopped funding it? So, yes, if we wanted to continue keeping it around. So, yes, if we wanted to continue keeping it around. So, yes, if we wanted to continue keeping it around. So we establish it by Guam law, So we establish it by Guam law, So we establish it by Guam law, but it would behoove us, of course, to continue to fund something but it would behoove us, of course, to continue to fund something but it would behoove us, of course, to continue to fund something that we established through a local law. that we established through a local law. that we established through a local law. That said, not every office established by Guam law gets funded. That said, not every office established by Guam law gets funded. That said, not every office established by Guam law gets funded. I believe an example would be the Bureau of Women's Affairs. I believe an example would be the Bureau of Women's Affairs. I believe an example would be the Bureau of Women's Affairs. That was established in the 90s, That was established in the 90s, That was established in the 90s, and I think it went for quite a while without any funding. and I think it went for quite a while without any funding. and I think it went for quite a while without any funding. Recently, it's been sort of reestablished through funding. Recently, it's been sort of reestablished through funding. Recently, it's been sort of reestablished through funding. In fact, I think we're the ones who gave, In fact, I think we're the ones who gave, In fact, I think we're the ones who gave, I believe this legislature gave funding to the Office, I believe this legislature gave funding to the Office, I believe this legislature gave funding to the Office, the Bureau of Women's Affairs in this legislature, I believe. the Bureau of Women's Affairs in this legislature, I believe. the Bureau of Women's Affairs in this legislature, I believe. We're the ones who reinstated some funding to it We're the ones who reinstated some funding to it We're the ones who reinstated some funding to it as it had been somewhat defunct for a while due to a lack of funding. as it had been somewhat defunct for a while due to a lack of funding. as it had been somewhat defunct for a while due to a lack of funding. So, of course, it would behoove us to fund as much as possible So, of course, it would behoove us to fund as much as possible So, of course, it would behoove us to fund as much as possible anything that we've created. anything that we've created. anything that we've created. But at the same time, it's not, But at the same time, it's not, But at the same time, it's not, of course, it's up to whatever legislature is in control at the time of course, it's up to whatever legislature is in control at the time of course, it's up to whatever legislature is in control at the time to decide how they want to fund agencies throughout the government of Guam. to decide how they want to fund agencies throughout the government of Guam. to decide how they want to fund agencies throughout the government of Guam. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Senator Perez, does that help? Senator Perez, does that help? Senator Perez, does that help?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. And thank you to the Chair. And thank you to the Chair. And thank you to the Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else on the main motion? Anyone else on the main motion? Anyone else on the main motion? If not, Senator Woy, you may close. If not, Senator Woy, you may close. If not, Senator Woy, you may close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just have a, if I can make a motion to allow Legislative Council I just have a, if I can make a motion to allow Legislative Council I just have a, if I can make a motion to allow Legislative Council to make non-substantive technical changes, to make non-substantive technical changes, to make non-substantive technical changes, for example, page five, line 13, page five, line 13, to add a period. for example, page five, line 13, page five, line 13, to add a period. for example, page five, line 13, page five, line 13, to add a period. Sorry, that must have got lost in the transfer. Sorry, that must have got lost in the transfer. Sorry, that must have got lost in the transfer.
On that motion, are there any objections? On that motion, are there any objections? On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Seeing or hearing none. Seeing or hearing none. Motion carries. Motion carries. Motion carries. Senator Castro, you still have the floor. Senator Castro, you still have the floor. Senator Castro, you still have the floor.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Yes, ma'am, thank you. Yes, ma'am, thank you. Madam Speaker, if I could, I'd like to motion to add the following cosponsors, Madam Speaker, if I could, I'd like to motion to add the following cosponsors, Madam Speaker, if I could, I'd like to motion to add the following cosponsors, if they'd be willing to be added. if they'd be willing to be added. if they'd be willing to be added. I move to add Senator Clint Rogel, the Oversight Committee Chair, I move to add Senator Clint Rogel, the Oversight Committee Chair, I move to add Senator Clint Rogel, the Oversight Committee Chair, Senator Joe San Agustin, Speaker Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Senator Joe San Agustin, Speaker Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Senator Joe San Agustin, Speaker Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Senator Kelly Marsh Titino, and my colleagues. Senator Kelly Marsh Titino, and my colleagues. Senator Kelly Marsh Titino, and my colleagues. And anybody else, Madam Speaker, for that matter, And anybody else, Madam Speaker, for that matter, And anybody else, Madam Speaker, for that matter, if they want to, if they want, just show your hands. if they want to, if they want, just show your hands. if they want to, if they want, just show your hands. But at least those, if they agree. But at least those, if they agree. But at least those, if they agree.
On that motion, are there any objections? On that motion, are there any objections? On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Seeing or hearing none. Seeing or hearing none. Motion carries. Motion carries. Motion carries. On the motion to the voting file, Senator Castro, move to the voting file. On the motion to the voting file, Senator Castro, move to the voting file. On the motion to the voting file, Senator Castro, move to the voting file.
Sure. 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 And would you like me to close, or should I just move? And would you like me to close, or should I just move? And would you like me to close, or should I just move? That's okay. That's okay. That's okay.
You're more than welcome to close, Senator Castro. You're more than welcome to close, Senator Castro. You're more than welcome to close, Senator Castro. I'll give you the time. I'll give you the time. I'll give you the time.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'm pleased that two former Homeland Security Advisor officials, Madam Speaker, I'm pleased that two former Homeland Security Advisor officials, Madam Speaker, I'm pleased that two former Homeland Security Advisor officials, two administrators from Civil Defense, two administrators from Civil Defense, through their submitted testimony, support this measure. through their submitted testimony, support this measure. These individuals, as the committee report will reflect, These individuals, as the committee report will reflect, are credible, given their training, education, are credible, given their training, education, firsthand experiences in that space. firsthand experiences in that space. Their input in the conceptualization and early drafting is greatly appreciated. Their input in the conceptualization and early drafting is greatly appreciated. Again, as I underscored, it's not a reorganization measure. Again, as I underscored, it's not a reorganization measure. With that said, I want to thank the former Governor, With that said, I want to thank the former Governor, the Honorable Felix Perez Camatso, for his foresight the Honorable Felix Perez Camatso, for his foresight in establishing the Office of Homeland Security in establishing the Office of Homeland Security and the Advisory Council through EO in 2003, and the Advisory Council through EO in 2003, to also the immediate past Governor, the Honorable Eddie Bazacalvo, to also the immediate past Governor, the Honorable Eddie Bazacalvo, for expanding the scope of the office for expanding the scope of the office and working with our local and regional partners and working with our local and regional partners on issues to establish the Marianas Regional Fusion Center. on issues to establish the Marianas Regional Fusion Center. Masas paschat para este sheha ki legislatura, Masas paschat para este sheha ki legislatura, para todos hamzu, para todos hamzu, ni men menyeluhu para uatu dan mitu. ni men menyeluhu para uatu dan mitu. Thank you very much, Senator, all of you senators Thank you very much, Senator, all of you senators who lent a hand in solidifying the piece. who lent a hand in solidifying the piece. Finenena donkulu no agredesina benai estino gehilo gikumitea Finenena donkulu no agredesina benai estino gehilo gikumitea si Senator Clint Rogel, si Senator Joe San Agustin loqui. si Senator Clint Rogel, si Senator Joe San Agustin loqui. Hamzu na tzotnik mone estina priniponi pogo. Hamzu na tzotnik mone estina priniponi pogo. Honrepli gehilo hago. Honrepli gehilo hago. Sudus masi puti honimu na una iu puti esti loqui. Sudus masi puti honimu na una iu puti esti loqui. Thank you, Madam Speaker, to all those who shepherd this piece forward. Thank you, Madam Speaker, to all those who shepherd this piece forward. I really appreciate the time, the privilege, I really appreciate the time, the privilege, and the opportunity to make a difference and the opportunity to make a difference and strengthen our homeland security posture. and strengthen our homeland security posture. With that said, Madam Speaker, With that said, Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill Number 62-35, Committee on Roles, I move to place Bill Number 62-35, Committee on Roles, as substituted by the Committee on Economic Development, as substituted by the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Maritime, Transportation, Agriculture, Maritime, Transportation, Power, Energy Utilities, and Emergency Response, Power, Energy Utilities, and Emergency Response, onto the third reading file. onto the third reading file.
On that motion to move Bill 62-35-COR to the voting file, On that motion to move Bill 62-35-COR to the voting file, are there any objections? are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Seeing or hearing none. Motion carries. Motion carries. Minority Leader, you're recognized on Bill 377-35, Minority Leader, you're recognized on Bill 377-35, oh, I apologize. oh, I apologize. Please forgive me. Please forgive me. He is still on the agenda. He is still on the agenda. Bill 340-35-COR, Senator Lee, are you ready? Bill 340-35-COR, Senator Lee, are you ready? She asked to just put the, all the amendments that were talked about, She asked to just put the, all the amendments that were talked about, to put it in a substituted form. to put it in a substituted form. Are you ready? Are you ready? I will recognize you on Bill 340-35-COR. I will recognize you on Bill 340-35-COR.
I thought that was set aside, point of order, Madam Speaker. I thought that was set aside, point of order, Madam Speaker. I thought that bill was set aside, just as we've set aside other bills. I thought that bill was set aside, just as we've set aside other bills. The motion was to set it aside. The motion was to set it aside. Period. Period.
Again, Senator Turlahi, I will tell you that this bill was, as it is, on the agenda. Again, Senator Turlahi, I will tell you that this bill was, as it is, on the agenda. There was a motion just to, to make sure that all of the amendments were intact There was a motion just to, to make sure that all of the amendments were intact and that would be submitted in substituted form, and that would be submitted in substituted form, and that when she's ready to go back on. and that when she's ready to go back on. We are at that stage right now. We are at that stage right now. Unless you have an objection to hearing it at this time, Unless you have an objection to hearing it at this time, I will recognize Senator Regina Bisco Lee. I will recognize Senator Regina Bisco Lee. Senator Lee, you are recognized. Senator Lee, you are recognized.
Sudus masi, Madam Speaker, Sudus masi, Madam Speaker, and thank you again to my colleagues, and thank you again to my colleagues, especially to the Oversight Chair and Appropriations especially to the Oversight Chair and Appropriations for continuing the discussion on Bill 340-35-COR. for continuing the discussion on Bill 340-35-COR. Madam Speaker, at this time, I'd like to further substitute Madam Speaker, at this time, I'd like to further substitute Bill 340-35 on the floor Bill 340-35 on the floor to incorporate some of the amendments that were requested to incorporate some of the amendments that were requested to address some of the concerns raised during the Committee of the Whole discussions to address some of the concerns raised during the Committee of the Whole discussions and by the Department of Revenue and Taxation. and by the Department of Revenue and Taxation. And I move that we accept the substitute bill. And I move that we accept the substitute bill. And I can go through some of the changes made And I can go through some of the changes made for the benefit of my colleagues and the public. for the benefit of my colleagues and the public.
I will take it as a motion first. I will take it as a motion first. On the motion to accept, are there any objections? On the motion to accept, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Seeing or hearing none. Is there an objection? Is there an objection?
I believe that the substitute bill has been uploaded onto our file. I believe that the substitute bill has been uploaded onto our file.
We will take a moment's recess. We will take a moment's recess. We will take a moment's recess. Yimina Trantaisinko Nalas Luturungwana is back from recess. On the motion to accept the substituted version, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Motion carries. Senator Lee, you are recognized on the motion.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, and thank you very much, colleagues. I can go through some or all of the changes made for the benefit of my colleagues and the public.
Can you move it? Senator Lee, can you please move it to the third reading for discussion, please?
Madam Speaker, I make the motion to move Bill 340 as further substituted on the floor to the third reading file and like to the opportunity to discuss it.
Can you go ahead and add, just for the record?
Notwithstanding the House rules, Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill 340-35 as substituted and further substituted on the floor in the third reading file, and I wish to discuss it.
Can you just read the title and the sponsors? I do apologize for the record.
No problem. Bill number 340-35 COR as substituted and further substituted on the floor, introduced by myself, Regine Bisco Lee, Speaker Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Senator Joe S. Augustine, Senator Kelly Marsh Titino, Ph.D., Senator Amanda L. Shelton, Senator Jose Pito Terlahi, Vice Speaker Talina Cruz Nelson, Senator Therese M. Terlahi, and Senator William M. Castro, and acts to relative to the establishment of the Recovery Income Support and Empowerment or RISE Program for the issuance of payments to eligible Guam residents during the state of public health emergency due to the coronavirus disease COVID-19 pandemic, to adopt rules and regulations to effectuate the same and to cite this act as the RISE Act of 2020.
Onto the third reading, you may discuss, Senator Lee.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, and I'm going to go through the changes made for the benefit of my colleagues and the public. And the first extends the implementation date to allow DRT the appropriate amount of time to stand up the RISE Program. That's found on page three, line 12. And again, it's to amend Section 3 of the bill to read and striking the words 15 working days. It says, 15 working days from the effective date of this act. We are replacing that with 30 working days from the date of identification of funds by Megahogan Guahan for the purposes of this act to implement the program and to allow Legislative Council to make technical corrections. Madam Speaker, the next amendment to ensure we are clearly defining the timeframe in which private sector workers will prove income eligibility by changing all of the references in the measure of taxable year to tax year. And I thank my good friend from Jiggo for suggesting this clarification. That can be found on page two, three, and eight, lines nine, 11, 14, 22, one, three, six, and five. So changing taxable to tax. Another amendment based on the Committee of the Whole deliberations, Madam Speaker, will delete the 2% reserve as a funding source for RISE at the advice of the good Senator from Jotny and the BBMR Director, and that can be found on page three, line 24, Section 5 Funding. Another amendment based on the discussions with the Office of the Governor will make absolutely clear that we will prioritize federal funding for this new program. And that's line six, page four, to amend Section 5 of the bill to read. No local funds may be used for this program as long as federal funds that can be used for the purposes of this act are available to encumber, obligate, or expend. Any funds transferred pursuant to this act shall only be used for the purposes of this act. And then the new language begins. Payment under this act shall be required only if payments can be funded under a federal coronavirus relief package or other such federal funds as are appropriate and lawful, period, end quote. And also, Madam Speaker, to allow Legislative Council to make technical corrections. Thank you, colleagues, for bearing with me. The next set of amendments are taken from the feedback given to us on this measure by the Director of Revenue and Taxation. The first will be on page two, line six of the bill. The change will make clear that two eligible individuals filing a joint return will receive $800, but that one eligible individual who files jointly will still be able to receive $400 provided that they qualify through their adjusted gross income, as discussed with the DRT Director. And that's line six, page two. The next amendment will require that tax returns that determine eligibility are validly filed and processed by DRT. That's line nine, page two. Madam Speaker, Director Shimizu says this change will ensure a more timely issuance of RISE Program payments, and my colleagues can find this feedback on item number seven of the DRT memo. The next amendment begins on line 11 of the same page, page two, and on page six, line 16. Both sections of this measure concern the employees of local and federal governments who are not eligible for these RISE payments. DRT has concerns that the legislation is unclear on how this provision should apply to retirees. So this amendment will make clear that retirees from either the government or the federal government, I'm sorry, from the government of Guam or the federal government will be eligible for the RISE Program. Please note that this amendment was incorporated with the amendment regarding the ineligible residents, i.e. non-resident aliens, deceased individuals, and estates or trusts for the purposes of format and style, and that can be found on page two, lines 13 through 21. Madam Speaker, the next section will further improve this, quote, "special rule for joint returns" provision by clarifying that in cases where only one individual qualifies for RISE when they file jointly, the payment shall only be made to the one person who is eligible. And again, that's page two, line 17. The next change is a technical correction pointed out by our professionals at DRT who pointed out that tax year 2020 returns would not show residency for the calendar year 2021. So this change adjusts references to residency requirements and to the bill to 2020 as this period covered by 2020 returns, and that can be found on page six, line 14, as well as page two, line 19. The next amendment can also be thought of as a technical correction, which I'm thankful that DRT has proffered. This change begins on line 18 of page two and also will affect line 18 of page six. And DRT has pointed out that the EIP Program disqualified non-resident aliens, deceased persons, estates, and trusts from receiving payment, and I believe it makes good sense to formalize these parameters for the RISE Program as well. Please note that this amendment was incorporated with the amendment regarding government employees for the purposes of format and style, and that's again on page two, line 18. DRT has also pointed out on item 13 of the DRT memo that offsets or garnishments are not specifically addressed in this measure. So, Madam Speaker, we've added a new subsection or section 2H to the bill to read. Any payment made or allowed to any individual under the RISE Program shall not be subject to reduction or offsets for debts owed to the government of Guam and to allow Legislative Council to make technical corrections. Madam Speaker, while I believe this type of direct assistance should be utilized to help our families instead of government agencies, I'm open to mandating garnishments for all GovGuam debts or for select causes like child support. But I think the important part of this amendment is to clarify what the will of the body is. So I ask my colleagues that if you don't agree with protecting RISE payments from garnishments, please, you know, feel free to change this section to reflect your stance so that there's more clarity on this issue for both DRT and our families. The next amendment adds requested requirements from DRT to help with the processing of RISE payments for items 18 and 19. The amendment reflects the exhibit attached to the measure beginning on lines 15 and then 24 of page seven. Madam Speaker, as we have repeatedly stated during discussions on Bill 340, we'd like to support DRT to process and pay these assistance checks as soon as possible, and that our partners at Rev and Tax have asked us to include this language to do just that. So I again thank my colleagues for their time and attention to the DRT memo and to all of these changes that we've made to the substitute bill. Sisus Massey for your time and your patience. The final change to Bill 340, which is a minor and technical correction, will ensure that it is the Director of DRT who will allow 2019 tax returns to be used for this RISE Program. And so that's on page eight, line five. To amend Section 7, Exhibit A of the bill to read, instead of taxpayer, it deletes the word taxpayer and replaces it with the word director. So the sentence will now be, "The director may substitute tax year 2019 for tax year 2020 to determine eligibility for this program," as well as to allow Legislative Council to make technical corrections. Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, and at this time I'm open to any additional amendments that my colleagues may have to this measure, and I thank you very much for your support. Sisus Massey.
Clerk. Colleagues, after confirming with the clerk, just so that we're clear and that we authorize legal counsel to make the necessary corrections as recommended, I'm going to go ahead and do the motion by Senator Lee to authorize legal counsel based on the presentation to make necessary corrections, to make corrections as necessary. On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Motion carries. On the main motion, anyone else wishing to speak on the main motion? If not, okay. Senator Therese, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. If the author could please clarify, I'm trying to, I was trying to follow along with the amendments that have been made to the substitute bill, but if they could explain the joint filers, because it says they're eligible to receive $800, but then they describe how they're going to receive the $800 by saying their individual income has to be, they're dividing the joint filers and saying the individual income has to be $40,000. So I want to know, that's in the case, one employee is a government employee and one's not? I don't know, if they could clarify, because, or if this language has been run by our legal, if they could just ensure us that this is very clear, because it's confusing to me right now.
Thank you, Senator Therese. Senator Lee, would you like to yield?
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, and just for the benefit of my colleagues or those who might be following along, it's page two, line 11, page six, line 18, and it's eligibility of the RISE Program. So we're adding additional language that would, additional language for eligible individuals for the purposes of this act. Eligible individuals shall not include those who were employed by the government of Guam or the federal government. And the additional language begins, "except for individuals who have retired from the government of Guam," or, I apologize, "for the federal government." So the next amendment, "special rule for joint filers," that was the question, by clarifying in which cases where, as the previous speaker was mentioning, one individual qualifies for RISE, but that person has filed jointly, so the payment shall only be made to the one person who is eligible. So that's page two, line 17, I believe. And so we're just adding additional language to that Section 2D1 of the bill, the special rule for joint returns. For the purposes of this paragraph, payment shall be made to the eligible individual indicated on the corresponding tax return. So we just want to make absolutely sure that, you know, again, and reiterating that this change was done at the request of DRT. It helps them, this language helps clarify for them that they can pay that one eligible filer who has filed jointly. So it was our intention that they pay an individual filer if they make under $40,000. So it does make sense to hold one eligible individual of a joint filing to the same eligibility requirements as a single individual, and I hope that answers the question.
Senator Therese.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. If I could just ask one more question. How much would that person receive? $400 or $800? That's the issue, yeah.
Thank you. Senator Lee.
If there is an individual that is filing jointly and there's only one of the filers are eligible, then they would receive 400.
Senator.
All right. Thank you very much to the author for yielding to those questions. That seems fair to me, and so I hope that the language works that way. And the other question I had, oh yes, was regard to the, this is just on the amendments that have been made, on that retirement language, sorry, it's on page two, line, subsection D, one, A. Okay, so it says, "any individual, eligible individuals, any individual other than an individual employed by the government of Guam or the federal government, and then except for individuals who have retired from the government of Guam or federal government." And I understand the intent perfectly, and I'm glad they put this in here, but I'm just wondering, we have a lot of employees who are what we call double dipping. So how does that apply to them? Because they've actually retired from the government of Guam, but they are still working with the government of Guam. So if that could be clarified?
Senator Lee, would you like to yield?
If I could just take a brief recess, Madam Speaker.
Moment's recess.
Yimina Trantaisinkona Leslatuwa Han is back from recess. Senator Lee, would you like to yield?
Sisus Massey, to the retiring speaker for proffering the question. Actually, after reading the language more carefully, I'm a little bit, I don't feel it's clear enough for me, so I would like to just work with legal counsel. We can continue discussion on the bill, but I will work with legal counsel to proffer an amendment to clarify what most people refer to as double-dippers. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I hope that answers the question for the retiring speaker.
Thank you, Senator Lee. Senator Terlaie?
Thank you very much. Yes, that would definitely clarify my question. So now moving on to the bill, I think I've sent two floor amendments, and they're trying to send the third. We're having technical issues at our office as well on the Internet. It's all down, I don't know. But so I hope that the clerks has received, there's one amendment for line four, page two of the bill. Wait, sorry, if I could do the other one, do you have the other one as well? Let me do that other one first. There should be one regarding the effective date.
Senator Therese, the one on page four, line 24, to delete the effective date?
Yes, but that page number doesn't look correct.
It is SB—
Page five?
SB 340, TMR L 24 P 4.
Says page five, right? Line 13?
Senator Therese, I want to take a moment's recess so the clerk can get her copy.
All right, thank you.
Yimina Trantaisinkona Leslatuwa Han is back from recess. Senator Therese, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So the first amendment I'd like to proffer is to change the effective date. So that is on page five of the bill, line 13, is to delete section eight, which says that the act shall be effective on January 1, 2021. So the effect of my amendment by deleting this section would be that the act becomes effective upon passage, upon enactment by the governor. So, and I'm hoping that by allowing her to implement it before January 21, that in case any federal packages come down before that time, before January, or in case they are able to use CARES Act money, the part of the 117 million that she has, you know, to spend before the end of December, that that becomes an alternative for source of funding. And of course, the bill gives the alternative for general fund appropriations. And that in order to get this money out sooner than later, if she's able to use general fund and then reimburse it with federal funds, if that mechanism becomes available, that's also an option. So it's just to give her flexibility to get this money to these people as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Therese. On the amendment, are there any objections? Anyone wishing to speak? If not, seeing or hearing no objections, motion carries. Senator Therese, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And so the second amendment is, it's to change the amount of payments that we're allowing in the bill, and this pretty much, my amendment is, it's to pretty much double it. But we've included the terms up to the sum of, instead of four, $800, and up to, instead of 800, for the joint filers, 1,600. And so this is an amendment sponsored by myself and Senator Moylan, who called me on the weekend, and I told him, oh, yes, I already did one of those, but yes. So I want to thank him for his sponsorship. And also, if I could add, Senator Tyto Gries request to be sponsor as well, so I could make that motion first, to add her as a co-sponsor.
To, on the motion to add Minority Leader Tyto Gries to the amendment, without any objections, seeing or hearing none, motion carries. And then on the amendment—
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So it's to change the amounts, yes?
Yes. Senator Lee, I will recognize you on the amendment.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I thank the proffer of this amendment, but I just rise to, I guess, a point of concern. I'm concerned that doubling the cost of this program makes it less viable. And so while I'm not formally objecting to the prospect of giving our struggling families more support at this time, I just ask my colleagues to carefully consider the possible consequences of this, I think, very well-intentioned amendment. Sisus Massey.
Thank you. Senator Lee, anyone else on the main amendment? Senator Moylan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yes, I'm in support of this amendment, and I hope it does pass. And from what I learned on the committee as a whole, from BBMR Director, pretty much made it clear to me that our FY '21 budget is at a point where that's almost impossible for it to happen to come funding for this RISE Act to be given out of our FY '21 budget. But, you know, there's always a chance. We heard also from Mr. Byrne, Director of DOA's, comment on the rain aid fund. We have more rain today and drops of water than we have in that fund account at all, because that one's dry. And then we had the discussion on the CARES funding, where we understand that there's about 41 million remaining in that fund balance. But BBMR Director kind of made it clear to me as well that that's all spent. Zero is going to go back. We are using that all up, is what I understand. But again, there's always a chance. And if it does come through the governor's authority, and they do wish to make the change with it, that's the governor's prerogative, and the governor has made it absolutely clear, those federal fundings are in her wallet and not in the legislature's pocketbook to be administered. What we're kindly asking in this bill is to please consider this. And since we're asking, why not ask for more? If Lester Carlson has mentioned that most likely the funding for this will come from the president after the next president sworn in with the next package of relief fund, which we don't know how much, and we don't know when, that will be a major source of the funding for this RISE Act. So why are we limiting ourselves if this is a hopeful thing, and people are waiting for it, and believe it could possibly happen, if not through the direction of the governor today, because she really, you know, she could do this today if she so wished, without this bill even going any further. But if it comes in the future through the next federal relief fund, then let's ask for more. And the wording on this amendment was pretty clear. You know, it's up to. So the governor has all the authority to decide which they want to do. Keep it at 400, or if the governor so wished to even make it more, go right ahead. It's up to. I just see that as not having to limit ourselves, and I think the people of Guam would be more than, would, could use that funding more so than, more now so than ever. So let's give that option to the governor. The governor so wishes to leave it as is, then that's the governor's authority. But if the governor so wishes to increase it, well, at least we put the little sound in the governor's ear there, and hopefully that word is heard and taken to heart. So I'm in favor of this motion, Madam Speaker, and I hope we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. Minority Leader, you're recognized on the amendment.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to speak. And I'd like to thank the author of the amendment for incorporating this into this legislation. Madam Speaker, the anticipation, the anxiety, I think, that our people of Guam are anticipating is what happens after December. You know, it's very unclear. It's a future that many of our people who are still unemployed are wondering what they're going to do, you know. Even though with the vaccine that's supposed to be coming to Guam soon, and hopefully to get that administered to those, the frontliners, as well as our madam Koo and those with comorbidities, it's still not going to address the issue of what's happening with our tourism. Nothing, absolutely nothing. Businesses still continue to close their doors. Most of them have relocated to the States. So that being said, Madam Speaker, it's important that we care for the individuals who are most in need, most vulnerable right now. And though, actually, $800, if you go into a grocery store with four, a family of four, that's usually wiped out within two weeks. It's gone in two weeks. So I think this is the least we can do. It talked about funding with regards to where the funding is going to come from, and it seemed that this administration was trying to rush to utilize $41 million. You know, in the last three weeks, we've been questioning, oh, where is this going to be spent? There would be no difficulty on how to spend CARES Act money if we should get a second round. It's very easy, Madam Speaker. We give it to those less fortunate, and this amendment will do just that. So I thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity and the good author for including me as the co-sponsor of this amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Minority Leader. Anyone else on the Terlaie amendment? If not, Senator Therese, would you like to close?
Yes, thanks. And, you know, I want to thank the author of the bill for pointing out that caution about whether, you know, this increased amount might make the bill less viable. And I'm hoping not, of course, because we really want this mechanism to work. And that's why we've included the words "up to." And if I could just confirm with the clerk that we're all looking at the corrected version that says "up to" the amount. That's the amendment. So my staff informed me one was incorrect, and we have a corrected version. And so, yeah, I'm hoping that that language helps to keep it viable. It keeps flexibility. As some of my colleagues have said, we actually don't know at all what that federal package might look like, if it will actually come or not, if it's going to be, you know, another round of PUAA, or if PUAA really ends. And if PUAA ends, this, we are in a serious crisis if our, you know, SNAP benefits are, I mean, so we've got some coverage, but not enough by any means. Not enough to cover rent, not enough to cover, like they said, one, two trips to the grocery store, especially, you know, maybe big families. So I'm just hoping, again, that this will give maximum flexibility, given all those unknowns, given what we know about money we might have right now, given what we might come in, and that they can shift accordingly. And, you know, we've done, the governor has given, you know, she's, they've worked very hard, and I want to commend those that have worked very hard on these different programs. For example, you know, we've pretty much made programs up from nothing, from scratch, and so they've been able to implement them. I just feel like, so we've got some mortgage relief going, but, you know, evictions, we don't know how those are going to end, right? We've got an executive order that has put them on hold, but I'm very concerned about that. $400 will not even cover one month's rent, I don't think, for hardly anyone that I can think of. And so, and just other costs that we, I'm sure I don't have to explain that. So just that. It's maximum flexibility, not knowing which of the federal programs will end, which will be continued, and so that these individuals also will be able to use these accordingly with flexibility. Thank you.
Thank you. I will take a moment's recess. Clerk wants to verify something.
So the governor has all the authority to decide which they want to do. Keep it at 400, or if the governor so wished to even make it more, go right ahead. It's up to. I just see it as not having to limit ourselves, and I think the people of Guam would be more than, would, could use that funding more so than, more now so than ever. So let's give that option to the governor. The governor so wishes to leave it as is, then that's the governor's authority. But if the governor so wishes to increase it, well, at least we put the little sound in the governor's ear there, and hopefully that word is heard and taken to heart. So I'm in favor of this motion, Madam Speaker, and I hope we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Moynihan, Minority Leader, you're recognized on the amendment.
Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to speak. And I'd like to thank the author of the amendment for incorporating this into this legislation. Madam Speaker, the anticipation, the anxiety, I think, that our people of Guam are anticipating is what happens after December. You know, it's very unclear. It's a future that many of our people who are still unemployed are wondering what they're going to do, you know? Even though with the vaccine that's supposed to be coming to Guam soon, and hopefully to get that administered to those, the frontliners, as well as our madam Koo and those with comorbidities, it's still not going to address the issue of what's happening with our tourism. Nothing, absolutely nothing. Businesses still continue to close their doors. Most of them have relocated to the States. So that being said, Madam Speaker, it's important that we care for the individuals who are most in need, most vulnerable right now. And though, actually, $800, if you go into a grocery store with four, a family of four, that's usually wiped out within two weeks. It's gone in two weeks. So I think this is the least we can do. We talked about funding with regards to where the funding is going to come from. And it seemed that this administration was trying to rush to utilize $41 million. You know, in the last three weeks, we've been questioning, oh, where is this going to be spent? There would be no difficulty on how to spend CARES Act money if we should get a second round. It's very easy, Madam Speaker. We give it to those less fortunate, and this amendment will do just that. So I thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity and the good author for including me as the co-sponsor of this amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Minority Leader. Anyone else on the Trelawney Amendment? If not, Senator Terese, would you like to close?
Yes, thanks. And, you know, I want to thank the author of the bill for pointing out that caution about whether, you know, this increased amount might make the bill less viable. And I'm hoping not, of course, because we really want this mechanism to work. And that's why we've included the words "up to." And if I could just confirm with the clerk that we're all looking at the corrected version that says "up to" the amount. That's the amendment. So my staff informed me one was incorrect, and we have a corrected version. And so, yeah, I'm hoping that that language helps to keep it viable. It keeps flexibility. As some of my colleagues have said, we actually don't know at all what that federal package might look like, if it will actually come or not, if it's going to be, you know, another round of PUA, or if PUA really ends. And if PUA ends, this, we are in a serious crisis if our, you know, SNAP benefits are, I mean, so we've got some coverage, but not enough by any means. Not enough to cover rent, not enough to cover, like they said, one, two trips to the grocery store, especially, you know, maybe big families. So I'm just hoping, again, that this will give maximum flexibility, given all those unknowns, given what we know about money we might have right now, given what we might come in, and that they can shift accordingly. And, you know, we've done, the governor has given, you know, she's, they've worked very hard, and I want to commend those that have worked very hard on these different programs. For example, you know, we've pretty much made programs up from nothing, from scratch, and so they've been able to implement them. I just feel like, so we've got some mortgage relief going, but, you know, evictions, we don't know how those are going to end, right? We've got an executive order that has put them on hold, but I'm very concerned about that. $400 will not even cover one month's rent, I don't think, for hardly anyone that I can think of. And so, and just other costs that we, I'm sure I don't have to explain that. So just that. It's maximum flexibility, not knowing which of the federal programs will end, which will be continued, and so that these individuals also will be able to use these accordingly with flexibility. Thank you.
Thank you. I will take a moment's recess. Clerk wants to verify something. is the one that says, page two, line four, and then page four, line eight, which is, it shows the "up to," and then, yeah, just saying "up to." I want to make sure that you guys have the right ones, okay? So on the amendment, is there an objection? Seeing or hearing none, motion carries. On the, so on the, Senator Trelawney, you've got a couple of minutes left.
Thank you. I have two more amendments, if I could. So the next one is, it just changes $15 million total to up to $30 million, corresponding with the previous amendment.
On that amendment, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Senator Terese. Anyone else on the main motion? Assistant Majority Leader, you're recognized.
Sainama Hasi Maskehalu. My amendment has been sent. I don't believe it's been uploaded yet, but I can discuss it. So it's just to provide a small amount of clarity. I want to thank the author of this legislation and the others who have proffered amendments for making the changes, for getting the input from DRT, and then for implementing all of their recommendations. So if I can bring up, what I'm looking at, and I think it'll just provide a little bit of clarity, it was something that I stumbled on a couple of times before I understood why I was misreading it. It's on page two, lines 15 through 18. And I had kept on reading that it would be retirees who had retired at any time during the year 2020. And so it just takes that phrasing, "at any time during 2020," and it moves it to the active part of the sentence, so that it would read, to amend Section 2 of the bill to read, A, "any individual employed by the government of Guam or the federal government at any time during the tax year 2020, comma, except for individuals who have retired from the government of Guam or the federal government." And again, it just moves this phrasing so that it's altogether in the active part of the sentence, where it's talking about the employment, and it leaves the retirees as separate. So therefore, it's very clear it's meant to apply to all retirees, and then to allow Legislative Council to make any technical corrections.
On that amendment, anyone else wishing to speak? Minority Leader, you're recognized.
Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I think it was brought up earlier in this particular section, an amendment to be made. So I don't know if this amendment is premature until we see what legal, the question was brought out about double-dippers, you know, being with regards to this section. So if I could take a minute, Madam Speaker, I'd like to talk to the author of the legislation to see what the status is so far, so then we can move from there.
Take a moment's recess.